Everyone, sorry about that. Okay, we are here for the biennial audits oversight commission. I am Eric Costello, councilman from the 11th district, Chair of the Commission. We are joined this evening by the entire Commission. Council President Nick Mosby, Councilman Isaac Yitzchay Schleifer from the 5th district, Councilman Chris Burnett from the 8th district, Comptroller Bill Henry. We have Director Henry Raymond from the Department of Finance and Inspector General Isabel Cummings. Comptroller Henry, it is good to continue to serve with you on the Commission in your new capacity. Councilman Schleifer and Burnett, welcome to the Commission. Really excited about serving with you guys on this. Excited about what you both bring to the table. We had our last meeting in December, I want to say December 18th or 19th off the top of my head. We have since approved meeting minutes for that meeting. We did that virtually over email, so I'm just publicly acknowledging that this evening. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Josh Pash, who is our city auditor. Josh, if you could take it away, and I think the first agenda item, if I'm not mistaken, is a review of the Group B biennial audits from calendar year 2020. And I believe we are starting on the performance side, if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct, Josh?
Correct.
And I think you have a presentation. We're also joined by Nina Themelis, who's representing Mayor Brandon Scott, as well as Matt Stulman on behalf of Council President Nick Mosby. Josh, if you could take it away.
Okay.
And Josh, I'm going to ask if you keep each portion of the presentation. I know we've got it kind of split into four pieces, right? We've got performance for 2020 and then financial for 2020, and then performance for 21 and financial for 2021. I assume we're going to spend a little more time on our 2021 items. But if you can try and keep each of those four sections to, you know, somewhere in the 15 to 20 minute range. And if we need more detail or clarification, I can speak for the entire Commission and say that no one in this group is shy. We will certainly ask for it. Thank you, Josh.
Okay, can I verify that you see the agenda on the screen?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So this is the agenda, which was also sent out earlier. And the next two slides list the Group B agencies and the audit dates of the audits. And I will start with the summary of our results for performance audits. So we're starting off with the Department of Health. We looked at the service areas with number of clients receiv- the performance measures, number of clients receiving mental health services through public behavior, health system, percentage of mandated food service inspections, and percentage of tobacco outlets checked for compliance with city laws. And we noted that for service 307, that the Health Department did not meet the performance targets for 19 and 18, and as a result, we did not validate that the numbers were correct and supported since they did not meet the targets. For service 717, the targets were not met, and they identified that this was due to a lack of staffing. And then for 718, the target for 19 was not met, but the target for 18 was met. However, they did not have documentation to support the 18 numbers, and so we were not able to substantiate that with supporting documentation. When we do these reviews, we also review the internal controls and processes around it. And we noted that for service number 307, that the Health Department contracts with Behavioral Health Systems of Baltimore to accomplish its objectives. And that is a nonprofit selected by Maryland State, so the city did not choose them, but they were selected by the Maryland State to act as the local behavioral health authority for the city. However, the city does fund them with about $1 million a year. And the finding here was that the city does not do oversight or monitoring of them and their compliance with the contract. For fiscal years 2016 and 17, we also noted that the actual results were not consistently reported in various budget books, which makes it challenging for people to do a trend analysis when looking at the budget books. And then for service 717, we noted that the targets for 2019 and 18 were not met. And this was especially of note because the city targets are lower than the state targets. The state mandates 100% of required inspections, and the city is- the city target is at 65% and 80%, and even those amounts were not met. We looked into why, and it was because they did not have enough environmental sanitations. And we did find a state report issued in 2016 saying that the city would need 41 environmental sanitarians, and they only have 14. And they noted the reason for this is hiring retention has been a challenge because of competitive salaries offered by other local governmental cities and counties. And then also, they have been denied additional funding requests through the budget cycle. For service 718, we noted that the performance measure did not capture the overall overarching state requirements, and it looks like it is complying- checking compliance with the city laws. And we noted that there was other provisions in the city law that were not included in performance metric, such as placement of tobacco products and smoking devices. We also noted that the state requirement is for fiscal year 18 was 18, 80 to 100% of tobacco retailers being inspected, and the city target was 50%. And then in fiscal year 19, the state target was 75%, and the city target was 70%. So there was a lack of alignment between the city and the state goals and requirements. Department of Law. So we noted that, well, as you can see, 2019, that they did not make the targets except for the final one. And then in 2018, they didn't make the targets except for the PIA request. We noted in our internal control review that the- for the PIA request, that the performance metric only measures the amount of time that it's in the Department of Law, and that the entire PIA process, including the agency's interaction and returning it to the PIA requester, is not included in this metric, which we identified should be clarified in the definition and the name of the performance metric. And then for the Minority and Women Business Opportunity Office for the turnaround time, we were not able to validate the amounts that were in there, and that was due to a number of reasons, including manual paper-based processes, change in leadership, and not making supporting documentation. For MOED, we had the service performance measures were selected that are on the screen. And we noted that they met to the latter two that we selected for our measure for both 2018 and 2019. And we did notice that for the first metric, that BBMR had set the target at 450 and 500. However, this is funded through the Department of Public Safety and Correctional Services, and they have set a target of 400 ex-offenders, of which the city has been meeting consistently. And so we noted in the audit a lack of alignment between the setting of the goal and the agency forming it and the funder of it.
Josh, a quick question.
Yes.
When we see a goal and we see a target, do we ever directly tie the amount of resources and output it took to attain that goal?
No, the, possibly years ago, when the outcome budgeting was set up, but in any of the audits that I've been involved in, that has not been- there's not a clear link between the resources we have and the targets that we're setting.
Is there any way to just put the service line item budgeted amount, like next to it, just so we can kind of have like some level of understanding of, you know, what it could have potentially cost to get to this particular goal or target?
I can put that as a future, as a future item to include in the reports.
Yeah, because I think that's important, because, you know, setting a goal, and I don't want to say an arbitrary goal, but setting a goal is like one thing. But what is really the cost benefit of achieving that particular goal is what I'm more or less interested in. And I know that does not have any real bearing on your audit, but even for the purpose of us reviewing the audit, it just- as opposed to fumbling through the budget book, it'll be interesting just to see that line item amount.
Right, Matt, that's easy enough to do and a great recommendation. Thank you.
Thanks, Josh.
Okay, and so we just spoke about this one. And then we'll finish off the performance with the prior results. So we had, the Health Department had two not implemented, two partially implemented, and five not applicable. The not applicable prior findings all related to inventory, and we did not test inventory because of the new workday system. The inventory system was going to be completely redone, and we did not find, think it would be valuable to assess and give recommendations on the current or previous inventory system. For the partially implemented, it was environmental health services, percentage of mandated food facility inspections completed. It was basically the same finding which I'd already presented. And then for the non-implemented ones, it was related to overdose reversal forms and O E N D state reports for no look some, yeah, no look some. And basically, the finding was that state-required fields on the overdose reversal forms were not all completed as they required. And then the other one was that in the Excel sheets, we noted that there were Excel cell formulas that resulted in inaccurate reporting, and those two had not been corrected during the follow-up audit or by the time of the follow-up scope period. For Department of Law, we noted that the three findings, one was implemented and three were not. The three were not was number of lawsuits handled, and the Law Department identified that they don't control how many lawsuits we have, so therefore, they can't determine or help it how much they do. And then the number of applications approved, the target was not met, and that was due to a change in leadership with that Minority and Women Business Office, and that they were not able to provide a supporting documentation to validate if it, you know, validate the numbers. And then the third one was percentage of bills reviewed on time, and the recommendation was to capture this data in a format which would be easier to calculate metrics. It was basically a, you know, word documents and passing it around, which took a lot of manual calculations. And they had identified a case management software, but that was not effective, and it did not address the needs of the Advice and Opinions Group. And so they were not able to use technology to help this process and make it more easily to do project management on. Okay, I'll pause for a minute to see if there's any questions on the performance audits. Okay, for the financial audits, we are, I'm reporting on Department of Resources, Wreck and Parks, Transportation, and Economic Development. We noted payroll is a common finding across. This was also cited as a material weakness in previous annual financial statements and the single audit. And the gambit is basically supporting documentation for leave approvals, and all those items were addressed in the planning of workday. And as everyone, well, everyone who works for the city is aware, they're still working out kinks and bugs in that area. For Department of Wreck and Parks, related to revenues, we noted that all receivables that are collected and recorded in the agency accounts that they need to have better monitoring over that process. And we also noted that there was inconsistent recording of information in the system's use for review collection. The agency has a separate cash receipt system that is separate from the city financial system, and there is no reconciliation between the city's financial system and the agency's cash receipt systems. And then we also noted that there was a lack of documentation to support agency alarm callbacks. And so what that is, is if a fire alarm or smoke alarm or burglar alarm goes off, and someone from the agency goes to check out the situation, that is not tracked and documented to support the increase in pay and overtime pay for those events. For Department of Transportation, the other findings related to capital projects. This is, they had significant negative capital project balances, cash balances for fiscal year 2019 and 18. This is also a consistent issue and concern. It ties into grants, management grants, revenues and grants expenditures, and tracking those and booking those. And Department of Finance has been working on cleaning up those balances over a number of years. However, for the financial statements that we were doing the audit with, the amounts were significantly- had significant large negative balances, which was not correct. And then for MOED, the others included accounting for encumbrances. Encumbrances is when the city has allocated funds for, or allocated resources to do a certain purchase, but hasn't received it, doesn't actually owe it, but is, you know, planning on it and has allocated those resources. Those are encumbered so that we don't spend those on other items. And so the city procedure is that when you do a blanket purchase order, that entire amount for the blanket purchase order is fully encumbered. However, if it's not spent and the purchase order expires or is completed, those encumbered amounts are not removed, which leads to overstating our encumbrances, which impairs the ability of the whole process of encumbering funds to help us manage our budgets. For summary of follow-up results from financial audits, we have for Department of Human Resources, we had one that was not applicable. And basically, this one was a, I'm sorry, it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be non-applicable. It should be partially implemented. But the H R I S system had a system administrator who was involved in the day-to-day processes, and the prior recommendation was that the system administrator be outside of the normal processes. However, the access rights were not changed when we had done the audit, and so we brought this up to them. And that should also be addressed in the new workday system. But we will be following up on this after that part of the workday system is completely entered and verifying that the segregation of duties when it comes to this is sufficient. For Department of Transportation, we noted two findings that were fully implemented. Okay, I'll pause there for a minute to see if there's any questions on the financial audits. Okay, the next section is, we had discussed in the last Commission meeting that we would modify the way that performance audits were done. And the, instead of looking at performance metrics, we did a, because of brainstorming session, and identified certain performance areas which we would be auditing. And so I just want to run through those and answer any questions related to those. So the first one is the Fire Department. The asterisk indicates that-
Hey, Josh.
Yes.
Hey, Josh, can you go back to the previous slide for a second?
Yes.
I only see seven agencies there. We're missing one.
One is, Mr. Chair, this is Dandy Mount, WD City Auditor. One of them is related to, I believe that is the Baltimore Development Corporation, which is under DHCD, so I think the board decided to- and they have their own audits for performance and financial, so I think we decided not to follow up on that one.
Okay, yeah, they have their own independent audit on financial, and I guess the assumption is that on the performance side, they're just kind of being bucketed in with DHCD. Is that correct?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Okay. For the Fire Department, the area was Fire Watch, and the objective was to assess whether the Fire Department has adequate and effective policies and procedures to administer and operate the Fire Watch program and whether those policies and procedures are in compliance with the National Fire Protection Association's requirements and regulations. For B-SIT, it was Information Security, and the objective was to evaluate whether the city has adequate policies and procedures to guide the city's IT procurement processes to increase the efficiency and effectiveness of the IT operations and costs. And then for DGS, which has also been kicked off, building utilization rate and asset management and is to evaluate whether the city has effective and efficient processes to identify for tracking and for monitoring building asset management. And we have to kick that one off also. For DHCD, it is vacant property reporting, and that is to identify whether the city has effective processes to identify and actually report the city's vacant properties. And this actually has a lot of stakeholders throughout the city who use this data and information. Department of Finance, we were going to look at paying the vendor bills within 30 days, and then to evaluate policies, procedures, and how that whole process is monitored and reported. Department of Public Works was to look at the water billing, and this was not going to get into the technicals of, you know, actually putting out water meters and how the water meter worked, but just looking at the efficiency and effectiveness of that water billing process and any monitoring and electric reviews they do to do checks on that. And then for MOHS, Children and Family Access was to determine that the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services is managing and coordinating city homeless shelters and those buildings and structures to meet those goals. Okay, any questions or comments? Thank you very much.
When I handle questions, I do have a question, but-
Yeah, Councilman, for yours, sir.
Oh, perfect, okay. I want you to jump in. First meeting. Thank you. This was helpful for me, and I did have a couple of questions about, or had two questions. One was about the performance audits for BCHD, service number 717 and 718. In your presentation, related to food facility inspections and the tobacco enforcement, are you able to speak to what, why, I guess their response, the agency's response to not being able to hit the stated metrics? And I'm trying to actually slide back to it, so. Right, yeah. Yeah, BCD continued to not meet and not align with state requirements related to mandated food facility inspections. And then the other one, 718, percentage of tobacco outlets checked for compliance.
Right, so let's start with 717, food service facility inspections. So they are, I mean, we identified and went through a state report that was commissioned by Maryland, if that was issued in 2016, that estimated that Baltimore City would need 41 environmental sanitarians to basically cover the population of food service providers, and we have 14. So this has just been an issue with understaffing. And coupled with the understaffing, they identified that the neighboring governmental entities, whether cities or counties, pay their inspectors more than we do. And so we end up losing inspectors, and it's hard to hire inspectors based on the salary position that we have. And they also noted that they had made, over the past number of years, additional funding requests for additional environmental sanitarians that has not been approved in past budget appropriation cycles. They did noted that not meeting the state goals, which is 100%, does not carry a financial penalty or any other penalty besides not, you know, you know, the potential safety risk. And then for the, so let me see, does that answer your question?
It does, thank you.
Okay. And then for percentage of tobacco outlets checked for compliance, so. So there was two things that we had here. The, when it came to meeting the target, it was difficult. We couldn't actually validate it because there was no listing or population of actual number of tobacco outlets. So we weren't able to recalculate or use the denominator to verify this number. And that was also an indication that the number's not, most likely not accurate, because there's no, we don't have the, we don't have the base. And then we also noted that, so you're just asking about not meeting it. So they noted that there was change in the key staff and then contractual vendor changes, which made it more difficult and resulted in having lower results.
Mr. Chair?
Comptroller.
Thank you. Josh, technically, the next question I have is actually for the Health Department, and I was just going to send it to them later, but in case this information came up during the course of the audit, when they say that they have difficulty maintaining staff because of the low salaries that they pay, does that mean that they have 27 vacant positions? That they just, okay, so do they have any vacant positions?
I do not know if they have any vacant positions, but I do know that they do not have a budget for 41 calculated by that state report. And that state report is also five, six years old.
So there's really, there's really two different problems. One is that we are not even trying to staff at the level recommended by the state. And even if we were trying to staff at that level, we're not paying enough for those positions to retain people, much less good people.
Correct.
So I would, okay, so let me put a pin in that for a second, because then the other question I had was, when you said you had difficulty confirming the total number of tobacco outlets, given that this is a target from the Budget Bureau, did the Budget Bureau have a number, or did they simply come up with an arbitrary percentage without knowing how many outlets that actually was?
Right, so we just, we just have the target percentage. There was no, there was no detail or criteria that would say this type of establishment is considered a tobacco outlet, or, you know, anyone who has, you know, these type of criteria, or, you know, we've got 8,000 in the city. None of that was identified.
Okay, so, Mr. Chair, this is technically not audits conversation, but I would like to follow up offline in your Ways and Means capacity to talk about maybe a joint conversation with- um, in your ways and means capacity to talk about maybe a joint conversation with the Budget Bureau over why they would have targets that they're not giving the agency enough positions to actually meet.
Yeah, and I, I think, you know, Director Raymond on the line. Director, I'll turn it over to you for comment or initial comment on that, knowing you can't give a full answer right now.
Right. In terms of the funding, it's due to lack of financial resources within the city. We fund priorities and our inability to fully fund all of the environmental san- sanitarians is an example of the lack of financial resources that the city has. Now, in regards to the performance measure, we'll coordinate with the Health Department to determine uh how the measures were established.
Yeah, there, and and Director Raymond, I, I like, I, I didn't necessarily want to do all this here, but I'm just looking, I'm looking specifically at the fact that we have fourteen positions. The state recommends we have forty-one. So we essentially have a third of what the state recommends and sure enough, our actuals are, they get, you know, two years running. They've a third of the number of positions that are needed have inspected a third of the total um, you know, inspections. And so I, I get that and I'm not even, you know, I'm granting the fact that resources being constrained, if we can't have more positions, I'm just curious as to why we're bothering to have a target of two or more times as much work as they can do if we're only gonna have this many people doing the work. That was, that was more my question is, if, if, you know, we can have a separate conversation or perhaps more accurately, the city council uh can have a conversation during budget season over how resources should be allocated. Um, but if you're not gonna give the agency the people that they need to do the job, why would we give them excessive targets? Um, that, that, that was more my question. And like I said, I'm happy to follow up later.
Yep, that'll be fine.
Okay.
Mr. Control, I'm happy to work with and and Madam Inspector General, get to you in a minute. Happy to to work with you on that. Certainly want to consult with with our council president on that as we, as we get ready for upcoming budget hearings. And Mr. President, do you have anything to share on that? Are you good?
Uh, no, Mr. Chair, I'm, I'm good with following your lead, so.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Yep.
Madam Inspector General.
Two questions I had, um, for Josh. One, um, I was very happy to see you did um some of the revenue on um parking wrecks. Because after um the shake and bake situation, I know that collecting revenue was an issue. I'm just wondering, because I never actually saw that audit. Do you make recommendations on how to best practice and how to make it better?
Yes, um, so the recommendations actually spanned the gamut from um, daily cash receipt reports and daily deposits. They um, they deposit anywhere between a week and two weeks. Um, we also identified uh different ways to kind of track this stuff coming in. Um, we had mentioned interrogation of duties, but um I can send you a link to that audit report that goes through the specifics of that.
Okay, great. All right. Because I just find stuff and I, I hope you guys make the recommendations. And how many, my other, I had extra two more questions. How big is your performance group now and how big is your financial group now?
So, good question. We have two teams for performance and each team has, but, and then we, we kind of rotate staff. So the team is usually between three and five. And then for financial, we have three teams and those teams range from three to seven. Um, total staff is going to be about seven um for performance and actually about ten for performance and uh fifteen for financial approximately. But I can get you more accurate numbers, um, because we actually did a lot of um switching up and when the single audit season comes, we kind of put all the resources to that and people get mixed up. And then we've um actually re-instituted cross-training for a number of um sections.
Right. All right, that, that'd be great. I really appreciate that. Um, the other thing I haven't, I noticed that in it, it's a coming up performance audit. It's the water billing one. And um, I happen to be testifying tomorrow. I think it's um Congressman Conway's group um for on the water billing set. And that really is a huge issue right now. It's, it's developing as um it's, I was just wondering, what's the time period that, that right now that audit's scheduled for? Because it's in such transition. I mean, I, you know, when they're redoing these, I don't know. Just want to make sure it doesn't not be effective because they're not, they haven't implemented the new.
Right, so we weren't gonna kick that off until the single audit was um fully completed, which puts us in May, June as for preliminary work.
Okay.
Um, and then, I mean, if we have time, we, you know, we have conversations with the agency. So um, you know, if the agent, you know, if we're not crunched, we can shift up some different audits, but we um, we do that sparingly with only good, good reasons. Um.
I definitely don't think you want to move it up. I was thinking more, it's one you want to push back because they're gonna be, they're in the process of implementing a bunch of changes.
Right, and I mean, one of the, one of the reasons why we are, we are, we've selected certain audits to be moved earlier in the year is if we feel that they will impact the design of workday. Uh, we want to give those designers the um control recommendations and weaknesses earlier on so they have, you know, more time to see if they can put it into the system in the design phase.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I had another question.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So I had a question about, uh, sorry, back to, I'm sorry to pick on Health Department today. Um, but um, service number three oh seven, uh, oversight, um, your findings found that there were um, there's no oversight mechanism established for uh BHSB. Um, wanted to know what the response was on that and 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 really just concerned um, considering the number of clients receiving assistance in Baltimore City, just, just under sixty thousand in the last few years. Uh, and just my own experience and and working with uh many of these residential based um, facilities, uh, and feeling like, nah, really unsure as to where the oversight was coming from. Actually, this is actually news to me that there was supposed to be an establishment of um, some sort of uh monitoring or or oversight of the uh the agency. Um, can you let us know what the response was on that, that finding?
Yes, um, their response was that the Health Department's gonna work with um BHSB to include output measures in their fiscal year twenty twenty contract agreement and that they are going to develop and implement formal policies and procedures to monitor the financial programit, programmatic activities um supported by the city funds by April thirtieth of twenty twenty-one. And they're going to document the monitoring activities performed to demonstrate that they have established those policies and procedures and they are going to, um, they identified that they don't have um staff in place to monitor those programmatic activities um as of yet, but um they are going to provide training to some current staff member by um December of twenty twenty-one and to provide, to perform that uh monitoring and that they will perform desk audits to monitor fiscal activities by September thirtieth of twenty twenty-one.
Okay. All right, um, I'll, I'll follow with them directly on any follow-up on that. Thank you.
Okay.
Colleagues, any other questions? Um, Josh, one thing that I, I wanted to float, which is a continuation of our discussion from the December uh, meeting. I, I know we briefly touched on this and we've, we've talked about this offline occasions is the necessity of having the financial audits, consider uh the fact that we have the CAFR. Um, so I, I think that we have a pathway forward to deal with that, which, which I'm gonna bring up for, for comment amongst the commission. But first, Josh, if, if you and and Director Raymond, uh, Josh, you'll be the weed and Director Raymond, if you want to add anything after, can kind of talk about, um, can, can better articulate the concerns with, with doing the biennial financial audits um, and whether or not that's an effective uh use of resources, whether or not those resources would be better utilized, uh, expanding the scope of the, of the performance audits and other audit functionality within your office. If you could, if you could touch on that, please, to kind of start a conversation.
Okay, so I'll, I'll start with um a two, two different buckets. So the first bucket would be um, the actual audit and the second bucket will be the output of the results. So um, starting off with the actual audit. There's a number of items which detract from the value and effectiveness of um, the statements that are being audited. So number one, the statements were paired on a cash basis. Um, there's no balance sheet. So there's no assessment of accounts receivable. There's no um, there's no assessment of, you know, accruals and timing and all of that detracts from the effectiveness of, you know, using the reports. And my understanding is I, there are no real users of the report. Um, and the financial reports are actually not used by anyone in the city. They're actually compiled for the purpose of the audit. And then when we go over them with the agency, um, almost always, I would like to say probably always, um, it's the first time the agency sees it. And then there's a lot of questions they have because there are budgetary level um, adjustments or financial level adjustments that didn't go through their processes. And so they don't even, you know, use those numbers. So that is, I guess, challenges with just the audit. When it comes to the output, which is the other bucket, is the finding that we find pretty much across the board is payroll, which is flushed out um, pretty thoroughly in the single audit and the CAFR and the management letter comments there. Um, revenue and capital projects and grants are others ones, which are all pretty much spelled out at a very detailed level in the um, in the CAFR and the single audit. So when it comes to the output, we're not really getting anything new. Uh, we get little nuances between agencies and agencies. So let's say for payroll, one agency might have a stronger um leave verification program than another agency. But these little nuances, um, we really don't want fixed at the agency level. Anyway, we'd like to have a, you know, a uniform process across the city. And so those are the, what I would say is the main areas where I don't, um, I, I don't find value and I don't I get feedback of value with these audits.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll chime in at this point. Uh, I totally agree with uh the city auditor. A couple of comments I have as it relates to the preparation of the cash basis financial statements that are used for the uh biennial financial audits. They are prepared by uh the Department of Finance. They are not prepared at the agency level. Primarily, the agencies do not have the technical skill sets to prepare those statements. And that has been the case since the biennial process started, even when it was called the quadrennial audit process. As the city auditor has indicated, there are no users of the statements. The only purpose that these statements serve is that they're a requirement in order to be able to do the financial audit. In terms of the output, I also concur with the auditor. The findings that are reported at the biennial financial audit level, at, at the agency level, those findings are reported at the CAFR level and the single audit level. So essentially, we're regurgitating the same findings at the biennial financial audit level at a lower level of detail, because now it's at the agency level as opposed to the citywide entity level with the CAFR. Uh, I have stated before that I believe that a better use of the taxpayers' resources would be to reallocate the resources that we're expending for the financial audits should be reallocated or redirected to the performance audits. And I believe that that's where we can really improve efficiency and effectiveness by concentrating more on the operational aspects of agency implementation of operations as opposed to con- continuing to expend resources on financial audits that are regurgitating findings that are already identified from the CAFR or the single audit. Uh, and that no one is using the financial audit reports. Period. So again, I totally agree with the uh city, city auditor's perspective on this.
Thank you. I, I concur a hundred percent. Um, colleagues, any, any comments, thoughts? Josh, you want to add something?
Just one, one add on one item um that Director Raymond had mentioned is the opportunity cost. So um, we've gotten a number of requests to um do an independent assessment into certain processes. And also, we've gotten requests from agencies to perform um follow-up procedures on what they've put in place. And it's a scheduling challenge because of what we have um required by the city charter with these biennial audits. So we would be more responsive to those and able to perform more performance types audits. And just as a clarification, a performance audit does not mean it doesn't have a financial impact. There are performance audits that actually trace um the performance activity or the processes or operations all the way to make sure they're being recorded correctly. So a cash receipts audit would be a performance audit. So it wouldn't be that we stopped looking at the financial operations of these agencies. It would be just a more targeted approach instead of just saying, here are this set of financial statements and we're giving an assessment on the accuracy of them.
I concur. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Mr. Chair, I, I had come to suspect that by uh the end of my tenure as a councilperson, uh, and uh now seeing it from this side, I, I am one hundred percent sure we could be doing so much more, um, if we could put all these resources towards a performance audit. So I, we, I, I, I agree, this is a great idea. I think we should move forward.
Um, Mr. President, Councilmembers Burnett and Schleifer, any thoughts?
No, I'm okay, Mr. Chair. Uh, Josh, I mean, thank you for uh, uh, the detailed um, uh, presentation. Look forward to uh working on the performance part and definitely interested in the future, trying to tie um the uh budgeted line item to it just to give us again, some type of background. We're uh listening to all the, um, the research and work that you, 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 your team and your folks have done.
Thank you.
Councilmember Burnett or Schleifer, anything?
I have anything else. Um, this is very informative for me.
Um, and I'm remiss for not, of course, welcoming Council President Mosby to the commission. I'm, I'm only here chairing it because of the Council President's appointment. So, Mr. President, I appreciate your um, trust and confidence in me on that. Um, so I, I think the, uh, the pathway forward is to, um, I had intentions of, of amending, you know, making slight modifications to the charter, uh, around biennial audits um, to kind of tweak some things here and there, maybe adding an agency, removing an agency. Um, but it sounds like that this, I think we're in agreement as a group that getting rid of the financial audits would, would be the most effective use of taxpayer dollars and refocusing those resources on the performance audits. Um, so I, I plan to, uh, pursue that, would certainly appreciate my colleagues, um, on the council's support. Um, Nina, if you could please bring that to the, um, administration, as I know Director Raymond well, would certainly appreciate the administration's support. Uh, and, and we'll, you know, continue to, to work through that issue. Uh, I think we, we probably do need to have a conversation with the Law Department. So I'm going to reach out to, uh, Solicitor Shay, uh, about this issue tonight. Um, and see, you know, if there's, if there's any, um, flexibility in the meantime. Uh, because any change to the charter would not go into effect until November of twenty-two, uh, which means two more years of, of financial audits. So, um, any other thoughts or feedback, uh, before we turn it over to Marguerite to see if there's any public testimony? All right, uh, Marguerite, uh, this is, this is, uh, not the most, uh, exciting topic of all time, so I would not be surprised if we don't have many folks on the line, but do we have anyone?
Uh, we have, um, approximately ten attendees. I can go down the list if you'd like, sir.
I would, I'd just love to talk with, about audits with anyone that will actually listen, so that would be great.
Okay, um, I believe Brittany Lewis is, uh, from the mayor's office, but I'm going to unmute her. Ms. Lewis, do you have anything you'd like to say? Ms. Lewis?
No, actually, Marguerite, she's with the council president's office.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's just, I don't know if he knows her.
Okay. Next we have a Ms. Walker, Ms. D. Walker. Do you have anything you would like to say?
Uh, I don't. I'm actually a member of the audit team. I'm just glad to hear what I heard.
Okay, thank you. I believe the next person is a staff person, also, uh, Keller. I'm going to, uh, go to Kim Saucer. Do you have anything you would like to say?
Hi, it's Kim Sour and I don't.
Okay, thank you. Sorry for the mispronunciation.
It's okay.
Uh-huh. Milton Walensky?
He, he's one of ours too.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. Scott Mo- M O S E R?
Hello?
Yes.
I don't have anything to add.
Thank you. Let's see, okay. Stephen Cohen?
Uh, yes, I'm a member of the Department of Audits team also, and, uh, thank you for asking. I have nothing to add at this time.
Okay, thank you. Uh, let's see, I think it's, there are three more. Let me see. Oh, no. I believe the first person is a staff member. Can you all help me out? A N I K W E N Z E. Is, is he a staff person? I can't pronounce your name and I can't see your la- is O G?
Don't tell your mom that your actions will affect other people. Because somebody's gonna have to clean.
Excuse me, um. Okay.
Marguerite, Anna Quinze has put a question into the chat. Has Maryland Office of Legislative Audit started its audit of B P D? The General Assembly passed House Bill five sixteen last year, which requires an audit of B P D every six years, starting July one, twenty twenty, to be completed in five hundred fifty days, although this is a state audit. I was curious if the process has started and if the city is cooperating with the state. Josh, are we cooperating with the state in their audit of B P D? I know we do our own.
So, um, the state did, uh, Legislative Audits did contact me, um, about their audit and they, it has some delays in it and I'm not aware if they've actually kicked it off. Um, and then, um, working with them and, and would be a question for the Police Department.
Raymond?
I believe you can.
Yeah, this is, uh, Henry Raymond, uh, the off, the State Office of, uh, the Legislative Auditor, uh, began the audit, uh, late fall two thousand and twenty. Um, the audit is continuing. The city has been totally cooperative, including, uh, all of the agencies impacted, primarily Baltimore Police Department, uh, and the Finance Department. Uh, there have been no issues with the state legislative auditors complaining about lack of cooperation or anything of that nature. So it's, it's been well underway for at least, uh, four to five months. It either started last October or last November.
That's correct.
That's the update.
Um, Mr. or Ms. O G B, do you have anything else you would like to say? Cause you're unmuted. Hello? Okay.
No.
I'm going to go to the last person on the list. Last name is K Y A L L A. Do you have anything you would like to say? Bonafiz?
No, there is nothing I would like to say at this time.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chair, that concludes the, the, um, attendees' public testimony.
Marguerite, thank you. Josh, as always, thank you for the, uh, excellent work and diligence. Uh, we look forward to circling back with you, uh, in the coming months. Thank you all. We are now in recess.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.